I'd like to call to order the Planning Board meeting of September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
The Town of Burlington will be holding the September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the Planning Board as a hybrid meeting due to the current state of emergency due to the COVID- nineteen virus. As such, the Governor issued an executive order on March twelfth, two thousand twenty, authorizing remote meetings under General Law Code Thirty A, Section Twenty, and extended by Chapter Twenty-two of the Acts of twenty-two, uh, twenty-twenty-two, including permitting remote meetings and participation until March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Madam Chair, so we need to do, um, because we have one member remote, we need to do a roll call so that the public knows who's, we can do a roll call vote. Um, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna do that now. So Chairman Rappaport.
Present.
Uh, Vice Chairman LaRue.
Present.
Member Clerk Gaffney.
Present.
Member Cavino.
Yeah.
Uh, Member Impemba.
Yeah.
Member Natola.
Here.
Member Sutherland.
Here.
Awesome. Um, so as always, um, members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and or participation is being provided courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast, um, unless otherwise required by law. Uh, members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on the agenda should make plans for an in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. So if those of you that want to seek, um, are seeking to participate remotely, you can do so at townofburlingtonwebx.com. Our meeting number is two three four eight three one three five one three seven. The meeting is being broadcast on BICAP Government Channel. You can find it on Comcast ninety-nine, RCN fifteen, Reson forty-one, and streamed on Facebook Live via the BICAP Facebook Government page. The public will be able to make comments during the hearing, during the time for public comments. Questions can be asked via WebX at, using the Q and A function. Um, and all persons wishing to ask a question need to identify themselves ahead of time.
Thank you, Liz. We have some items being continued off this week's agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take Items Seven H and Seven I together and out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's fine. Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Vice Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Member Clerk Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
And Member Impemba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Item H is a continued public hearing, petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article Three, Districts, Article Four, Use Regulations, and Article Eight, Overlay Districts, eight point, eight, eight point five point zero, Town Center, to create a new zoning district, Town Center Multifamily TCM submitted by the Planning Board. Item I is a continued public hearing, petitions to rezone property to the Town Center Multifamily TCM District, One Thirty-seven, One Thirty-seven R, One Thirty-eight, One Thirty-nine, One Thirty-nine A, One Sixty-nine, One Seventy-one, and One Seventy-three through seven, One Seventy-five, One Eighty-five, Two-O-seven, Two-O-nine, Two-Eleven, Two-seventy-six, Cambridge Street, Twenty-five, Twenty-six, Thirty, Thirty-six, Grant Avenue, One Thirty-eight Avenue, Seventeen, Eighteen, Twenty, Twenty-one, Twenty-two, Twenty-four, Terry Avenue, submitted by the Planning Board. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue these matters to the Planning Board meeting of October sixth.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Second.
Sorry. Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Cavino.
Yes.
Impemba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I'd further like to make a motion to take Items Seven J and Seven through Seven N together and out of order for discuss discussion purposes.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Cavino.
Yes.
Impemba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Item J is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section Four Point Two Point Seven Point Four. Laboratories engaged in research, experimental, and testing activities included but not limited to the fields of chemistry, electronics engineering, geology, non-biologic medicine, and physics of the zoning bylaws, Twenty-two Terry Avenue, AP Terry LLC is the applicant. Item K is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section Four Point Two Point Seven Point Four Point One. Life science laboratories engage in research, prototype manufacturing, uh, experimental and testing activities included but not limited to the fields of pharmaceuticals, biomedical technologies and engineering, life sc, life systems technologies, environmental and biomedical devices, biosafety level four, BL four. Laboratories is defined by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and prohibited in Burlington of the zoning bylaws, Twenty-two Terry Avenue, AP Terry LLC is the applicant. Item L is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section Four Point Two Point Seven Point Four Point Two. Life science laboratories engage in the manufacture of life science technologies and medicines for commercial production to the market, including but not limited to the fields of pharmaceuticals, biomedical technologies and engineering, life systems technologies, environmental biomedical devices, biosafety level four, BL four. Laboratories is defined by the Center for Disease Control and Prevention are prohibited in Burlington of the zoning bylaws, Twenty-two Terry Avenue, AP Terry LLC is the applicant. Item M is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section Four Point Two Point Seven Point Nine. Hazardous and toxic materials, chemical use, storage, transport, disposal, or discharge of the zoning bylaws, Twenty-two Terry Avenue, AP Terry LLC is the applicant. Item N is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section Four Point Two Point Seven Point Eleven. Generation of storage or hazardous waste limited to the volumes classified as a very small quantity, generator, PSQG, of the zoning bylaws, Twenty-two Ave, Twenty-two Terry Avenue, AP Terry LLC is the applicant. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue these matters to the Planning Board meeting of November third, two thousand twenty-two at the request of the applicant's attorney in an email dated September twelfth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Second. Uh, Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Cavino.
Yes.
Impemba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, moving on to citizens' time. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on an item that is not currently on our agenda?
I am rebooting my computer, therefore I cannot see anybody. Um, so if you are in the audience online, please raise your hand in the WebX.
Seeing no one, let's move.
Property.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to announcements, please.
Sure. So today, if you didn't know, there was a beer, Town Center Beer Garden in the new, um, Pocket Park. Um, so it's a great time, music, DJs, food, just a great community event. Um, it happened today, September fifteenth. It's gonna happen on the twenty-second and the twenty-ninth, so Thursdays in September from four-thirty to eight-thirty. Um, and it's, um, next to, um,
Sweet Ginger.
Sweet Ginger and the Pocket Park. And it, you know, very well attended, so it was really fun. Um, Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day is happening on September seventeenth this weekend from eight-thirty to twelve at the Francis Wyman School. Everybody's favorite Truck Day is happening on September eighteenth from ten to two on the Town Common. Um, and as always, get ready, Town Meeting happening on September twenty-eighth at seven-thirty in the Burlington High School.
Thank you, Liz. Do any other, uh, members have announcements before we hear some brief presentations from other committees or departments?
I have an announcement, if I may.
Please do.
Um, so I, I'm emotional to make this announcement, but, um, as many of you know, I'm running for state rep for the Second Essex District, um, uh, in Massachusetts. Um, and I have spent twenty wonderful years here with all of you, um, and with many other members and members, uh, Jack Kelly, Ann Cummings, Paul Roth, Alfie, Jane Hyde, Paul Raymond, John Di Francesco, Peter Coppola, Carol Parno, and most recently Mike Aspao. And it's been wonderful to serve with all of you, um, and Tony Anne and Jessica, it hasn't been long. Um, but it's, it's been a wonderful wild ride. I, I'm very proud of the work that we've done together. I think there's, uh, it's just amazing. My entire professional career has been with you and, and all of you. And when I, in two thousand twelve, when I interviewed for the Planning Director position, I mean, it was just the weirdest thing ever because it was like interviewing with my family members around, you know, Thanksgiving table. So, um, I just wanted to say I will be resigning as Planning Director. My last official day will be tomorrow. Um, I have, again, it's, it's been wonderful. I'm really, I, I thank all of you and I. Proud of the work we've done. We've really made strategic decisions. Um, since Burlington being, you know, gr, really booming in the fifty, sixties, and seventies, kind of auto-dependent community and really looking at this and changing how we can make Burlington a more walkable and close-knit community, and even just the Pocket Park today is evidence of the, how far we've come um, with the Town Center and Network Drive and Third Ave and really introducing new neighborhoods into Burlington. So, um, I thank you for giving me all of those opportunities. Um, and with that, I just wanted to say I also have had the pleasure to work with a wonderful staff. Um, you know, obviously Tony was a wonderful technician and was so intelligent in, in planning, and I learned so much from him. And having the opportunity to hire, uh, Don Benjamin was with us for a while and then, um, with, uh, Josh Morris. And when I was, we interviewed Liz when I was about to deliver my son and I, on the way to the hospital, I called Josh and I said, "These are her references. I really want to hire. Please do that." And that was seven years ago. My son turned seven yesterday. Um, and she has done a wonderful job. And Caleb and Brady was all great, and Caleb's with us now. And I'm really pleased with the staff we have and, um, not at all to be overlooked and is really the key and core of our department is Gendalinas, who keeps us all running and want to thank her for all of her work. Um, and, um, with that, just wanted to say that, you know, I, I know Liz is, Liz is wonderful and she is absolutely fully capable to take these reins and I have full faith in her. Um, and I hope with you, I have proposed, um, some time to spend some part-time, um, back with the town and with the department to help in this transition, um, during my transition as well. Um, and hopefully can stay on in a part-time capacity to help everybody move through it as well. It's so exciting. We finally are getting the staff. We need to be really successful, so I want to help with that. So it's super bittersweet and I just want to thank you and it's, it's a wild ride. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Kristin. Uh, you will be sorely missed. Um, you have developed, uh, an amazing staff and we know that Liz is a rock star and she will absolutely, you know, do, do well by us. Um, but again, you will be, you will be missed and we do look forward to working with you until, until you get us to where we need to be.
Uh, just a, a, a quick few words, uh,
Please?
Brief, right?
No, I said please, but
Oh, thank you.
Brief too, sure.
Well, then please and brief.
Please, brief, please.
Please, brief. Since, since I was Chair of the Planning Board back when Kristin was here as an unpaid intern, believe it or not, and, uh, we were working on the Three A, uh, project at the time. And, and, uh, being an unpaid intern, you really don't expect too much, but she really, really came through on the Three A Committee. And before we knew it, we had a strip map that was, I don't know, about five feet long that showed all the owners on each side of Three A. It was really, uh, in quite detail. And, and we were looking, I think it was, uh, it wasn't senior planner, it was assistant planner at that time. Right, our assistant planner at the time, uh, Melissa Santucci was leaving. So we, we needed an, uh, we needed to replace her. And, uh, and, uh, Kristin was really, hmm, maybe yes, maybe no. And so I, I got ahold of who I thought would be the next Planning Board Chair, Jane Hyde at the time. And we took Kristin out for pizza and twisted her arm hard enough so that she said yes. And, and, uh, it's, it's been a, uh, interesting twenty years. Twenty years went by like that. Uh, and, and I'm sure, uh, Burlington's loss will be the legislature's gain, that's for sure. And, uh, and it, uh, it was very good working with you, Kristin. Thank you. Thank you.
Likewise.
Thank you.
Please. I, I will be brief.
I said please.
I know, I know you did. So I've been on Planning Board for ten years, so Kristin has been the Director almost the whole time I was here. And, um, I've learned so much from you and I've really enjoyed working with you. I'm gonna miss you. But, um, I truly believe that Burlington's loss is the gain of all the constituents in your area. I wish you every success and I hope that you'll stay in touch because we're really gonna miss having you here. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I would, uh, mirror what, uh, Member LaRue said, uh, you know, what I've learned from you, uh, coming in the ground is, was fantastic and th, and thank you for that. Appreciate it.
And I've had the pleasure to work with Kristin, I think, at, what, for almost, in my eighteenth year, I think now. And, uh, I can honestly say you've been a phenom, just a great asset for the Town of Burlington. You've taken in your tenure and the, you know, and your position, you've really brought the town into, you know, into, uh, new stages. And, and I, I, I thank you for that, being a lifelong resident. I thank you for that. And I wish you well in your future endeavors and good luck in your, your general election. And hopefully you'll, uh, I'm sure you'll do well at whatever you choose to do in the future, so.
Thank you. Well, I always said that, you know, working with, it's why you decided to join the Planning Board.
That's exactly right. I had no interest whatsoever in the Planning Board.
Town Center was a good project.
Yeah, it was. Yes, yes.
Good luck, Kristin.
Thank you very much, you guys.
We'll miss you.
I'm sorry?
Presentations.
I think we have presentations. Yeah, let's do the presentations. So moving forward, um, we have a few presentations from other committees, uh, and departments. So Liz, who will be starting with us?
So we'll be starting with, um, Sherri Ellis, who is, um, here representing, um, Yes Vote Yes CPA Burlington. So CPA, um, Committee in Burlington. Um, the CPA is going to be on the November ballot, so. Mark your calendars.
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. And, um, wow, um, to follow that announcement is, um, threw me off base. But, uh, if I can step aside for a second and say, as the Chair of the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee, which is not why I'm here tonight, but I just want to thank Kristin for all the support that she's given our committee, which is only four years old. But, um, it, it's been a great four years with that committee and thank you and I wish you all the best, um, going forward, no matter what happens and where you go, but you'll be missed here. So now I'll take that hat off and I'll put my Community Preservation Act, uh, hat on. And, uh, I'm just gonna read a statement, kind of, um, so I stay focused and not get sidetracked and forget important elements. So I'm here tonight as a member of the Yes CPA Burlington Group and I'm here to ask the board members of the Planning Board for their endorsement of the Community Preservation Act. As, um, Liz said, it's gonna be on the ballot on November eighth. Last May, our group went to Town Meeting to ask for approval for that ballot question to let the voters of Burlington decide whether they wish to become a CPA member of community. With the passage of that article, the question is now gonna go to the voters. Earlier this year, we gave the Board a full presentation, um, with, about the community preservation. And with that in mind, I don't want to take up too much time. However, with respect to your new members, I just wanted to give a brief, um, review of the program. So the basics of the CPA is it's a program created by state legislation that's been in existence since the year two thousand. It was established to incentivize investments in Massachusetts communities by creating a local revenue stream dedicated specifically to areas that will improve the quality of life for the residents, businesses, and visitors. These areas include open space and recreation, affordable housing, and historic preservation. In order for a community to benefit from the program, they must adopt the Act, which simply means that the communities create a local surcharge. In Burlington's case, it will be one point five percent on the real estate tax of all properties, both residential and commercial. Of that surcharge, there are exemptions available for those who can least afford the increase in their taxes. The first one hundred thousand dollars of all real estate assessed values is automatically exempt. Second, as an opt-out option, there is a low-income residential exemption for those at the eighty percent AMI, and that's determined by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Third, there's another opt-out option for seniors and those over sixty, whose income is about the eight, the one hundred AMI, uh, percentage. And then any portion of the taxpayers' property taxes that are exempt under Chapter Fifty-nine of Massachusetts General Laws is also exempt from the CPA. To add to those local funds that are collected, the state provides an incentive, a match, from the State CPA Trust Fund, which does vary every year. The trust is made up of fees collected from all transactions at the Registry of Deeds, including sales of property, refinances, variances, and any other items that require registering. So many of us have been paying into the state trust fund and not realizing any of the benefits. In addition to the registry fees, there may also include an annual allocation from the state budget surplus. Last year, the match was forty-three percent. And over the last ten years, the average was about twenty-nine percent, and that's a really good return on our investment. For example, had Burlington been a member community last year, the total revenue would have been just over two million dollars for that year alone. And to date, a hundred and eighty-nine Massachusetts communities have already joined. The funds are controlled by the town, they're allocated by Town Meeting, and can only be spent in the areas mentioned earlier. The legislation mandates that ten percent annually must be earmarked for each of those three areas and the remaining seventy percent may be used in any of those areas. Although funds are received annually, they do not need to be spent annually, meaning that we can save up for larger projects. Additionally, the CPA funds can be used in conjunction with other funds, such as municipal, private funds, or any other grant funding. Many of the CPA projects in other communities are public-private partnerships. Once the CPA is enacted by the community, a local community preservation committee will be formed. That will occur through a bylaw and that will be discussed in public forums and ultimately approved by Town Meeting. The makeup of that committee consists of five mandated representatives, one representative from this board, the Planning Board, and others from Recreation, Historical, and Conservation Commissions, as well as the Housing Authority. In addition, there may be up to four optional members from the community. The committee's charge is to review and recommend any projects that are proposed and ultimately, um, recommend them to Town Meeting for discussion and approval. Why is this good for Burlington? The CPA allows all community members more of a say in what they want our town to be with respect to the areas of recreation, open space, more affordable housing options, and preserving our historical elements. By using these CPA funds on the often underfunded areas, it also opens up the municipal budget for additional ability to fund the important areas of infrastructure, safety, and education. It's good for our community. And although it's possible, no CPA that, no community that has ever joined the CPA in its twenty-two years has ever left the CPA. So I'll leave you with that. I've left some flyers for everybody. Um, we do have a website, which is listed in the flyer. It's yescpaburlington.org. And that has a lot of detailed information, um, as well as some little one-minute videos we've been putting together that your fellow residents and town leaders have been, um, giving their ideas as to how it would be beneficial to Burlington. There's also some mini facts on there. And there's also a link to the State Coalition website, which is communitypreservation.org. And that site has a great database, which not only does it list all the statistical revenue and allocations and money things, um, but it also has a database that you can go in and see any community that is a CPA member and all of the projects that they've done. So it's, it's just a wealth of knowledge and it's great to see it. Arlington, Lexington, Bedford, Billerica, Chelmsford, Tewksbury, and the list goes on, all of our, our neighbors. So with that tonight, um, I ask for your board's endorsement of the CPA. And also, as residents of Burlington, I certainly ask you to vote yes on November eighth.
Great. Thank you very much, very much for your presentation. Um, you have, uh, my support, uh, fully and wholeheartedly.
Do you want a motion?
Uh, may I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion that the Planning Board supports the CPA fund and urges residents to vote yes in November eighth election.
Thank you, Member Cavino.
Second.
All those, oh, I'm sorry.
Vice Chair, Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Cavino.
Yes.
Impemba.
Yes.
Natola. Um, and Sutherland.
Yes.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Have a good evening. Thank you again.
All right. Liz.
Yes, next, um, I'm gonna give a brief presentation. Um, I see that, um, Carrie Donahue is here and so I'm gonna give a brief presentation, um, on, um, what the house, Housing Partnership has been up to. They've done a housing, they've completed their housing needs assessment. Um, and so that is, um, very exciting. Um, I'll get that up and I will share it with you. Um, so. Okay. Okay. Um, so last year, um, at Town Meeting, I think it was September Town Meeting, the, um, Housing Partnership asked Town Meeting for some money to, um, hire a consultant to do, um, a housing needs assessment to kind of give us the big picture on what, um, what we have in terms of housing in Burlington, what it's like, what the community feels it needs, what it doesn't need. And so, um, this is the culmination of that. We have everything, um, it's done, so that's excited. Um, so we consulted with MAPC. They're a local, um, planning agency out of Boston. Um, and they collected data on our housing stock. They first did huge, you know, looked at all the big data, demographics, um, and affordability, like who's spending more than they can afford on housing. So this is kind of a visual of what kind of the contract we worked on was. So you get data, public engagement. This is, this is the process, basically, that we went through. Um, so this is what we found. So overwhelming majority of the housing in Burlington, obviously, is single-family. Um, we have, um, sixteen percent multifamily, um, and, but only nineteen percent of it is middle housing. So that means smaller-scale multifamily, so duplexes, quad, quads, um, you know, that in-between housing. Um, and so sixteen percent, yeah. And so we've only permitted one duplex since the early nineteen eighties. So, um, there's kind of a gap. It's either you want to have this large-scale multifamily or you own a house. There's nothing kind of in-between is what we found. Um, housing, I've, everybody, you know, this is not a shock. Housing prices are crazy right now. Um, they've climbed astronomically. Since twenty-eleven, the average home price in Burlington has gone up eighty-two percent. Um, yeah, when I started here, housing, you know, three hundred, four hundred thousand for a house seven years ago, and now it's seven hundred thousand, probably even more. Um, average rent in Burlington has also gone up, um, gone up forty-six percent since twenty-eleven. And you would need an income of over ninety-six thousand dollars to afford the average apartment rent in Burlington. So we also looked at race and demographics. And so, um, many, most of the homeowners are, are white, um, have a staggering gap in homeownership by race. Um, and so only one percent of homeowners are Hispanic and one percent are black, fourteen percent are Asian. So that's, um, information. Um, the biggest kind of thing we talked about in housing is how many people are cost burdened in Burlington. Um, a co, a cost burdened household is one that's spending thirty percent or more of their, um, income on housing. So it doesn't leave a lot of money for healthcare or transportation or food. Um, and we found that twenty-eight percent of households, um, are considered cost burdened. Um, and so this affects owners, renters, um, and forty percent of, forty-five percent of renters are cost burdened. Um, and we think about cost burdened owners because as home values continue to rise, it may be difficult for them to continue to afford their homes. Um, and also, you know, we've talked a lot about homes, senior housing, and so that, it's also especially hard for seniors. Um, and one of the biggest, and I think the most important thing that this, um, project entailed was getting, is kind of ground-truthing. So it's fine, we can look at census data, we can look at all this stuff, um, but we actually had focus groups where people came and told us what they, um, what they thought, asked questions. Um, and so we kind of have ten takeaways, um, from those, um, focus groups. So middle housing, um, homeownership is unattainable, um, we value diversity and inclusion. And so that, you know, if we have, you know, more affordable housing, we can, we can increase diversity and inclusion in town. Um, you know, aging in place, seniors, we're all concerned. Um, it makes, again, cost burden. And then, um, you know, we talk about capital A affordable housing. So we talk about capital A affordable housing is D-restricted affordable housing. Lower case A affordable housing is housing that is older in nature. It's still useful, but you're not gonna be able to get the highest rents for these houses. Are there, you know, so, um, kind of starter home, you can like starter homes, you know, that type of thing. Um, again, single person, like if you're a single, if you're a single parent, you're gonna have a hard time finding a home in Burlington. Tear downs are occurring, um, lack of family-sized rental housing. So we have a lot of two-family, or two-family, two-bedroom houses, two family, two-bedroom rentals, but not enough for, say, a family. And so there is overcrowding in rental units. Um, and we also, you know, we, we have a service economy in town, a huge service economy in town. And again, um, the local workforce is, um, it's hard, you know, can't afford it. Um, so the next steps, the, the point of this was to get all of our data in one spot. Next step is to create a municipal affordable housing trust so that the money that we have, um, can be spent more efficiently. Right now, you have to go to Town Meeting to get money out and three times a year, you know, the market doesn't work that way. Um, and also potentially create a housing production plan, um, to look at it more holistically. Um, you know, this is also great information when we talk about the MBTA communities that are coming up. We need to up. We need to make sure we're in compliance with that, and to create a housing strategic plan to guide further work. And so questions? Does anybody have any questions they have? You can download the full report at the Housing Partnership. They also have a three-minute video that's really cool.
Great. Can we put that on our social media?
You bet.
Great.
Caleb?
I got it.
Awesome.
Yep.
I, I do have a question. So you talked about middle housing, and then you talked about single, like, single housing. So in-laws or accessory units, is that considered single, or is that that middle?
That would be considered that middle housing thing. It's, you know, it's, it's not, it's not a simple process, in-law versus, you know, access, like accessory dwelling unit, and so it's, that is something that I think we need to kind of tidy up in our bylaws, kind of figure that out, and so.
Yeah, just to define that a little bit better.
Yeah, and straighten it out, and I think that with this kind of, we have, that, you know, this, this report is a really great place to start. We have great leadership in Carrie Donahue. She's been absolutely fantastic, and she's the chair of the, the Housing Partnership, and she's just, she's a rock star, so.
Great.
Lucky to have her.
Caleb, I think it would be awesome if you could put the next, the next meeting for the Housing Partnership, for folks that, you know, once they see this, if they want to get involved, or if they have feedback. I mean, it'd be great to get community members involved.
Yeah, just want to.
When you're ready for it.
Yeah, I just want to ask, Carrie, do you have anything you want to add? Did I?
No, I, all I wanted to say was to thank Liz for presenting this, and also for the really work that you've done over the last years. Liz and I have been the key point people that then we've seen, we've attended an awful lot of meetings with them, longing for the data, and trying to under their brains around it, and figuring how that's communicated to the community. So I'm just really excited to have this topic and the integration, we'll present it at town meeting, and then the video, and a lot of social media, it's going to go on after that as well. So we're hoping to get basically support from all of the committees that we're going to, to, to help us make the case to the town for why we need to move forward with the municipal for housing trust, or any of those other steps that we could do, like the housing production plan. So thanks for letting us share the information with you.
Great. Thank you so much. Our next presentation is from our Economic Development Director, Melissa Tentakalas.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening. I think I could share my.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. You can share.
Yep, you bet.
So Melissa will be presenting something on the Mall Road Middlesex Turnpike zoning initiative.
Thank you, Pla, Planning Board. I appreciate your time on this topic. For the record, my name is Melissa Tentakalas. I work as the Economic Development Director for the town. And yes, I think the news officially, Kristin, is shocking, I think, around all, all the community circles, so just me too, obviously wishing you the best. That said, I'd like to share with the board an update coming on the heels of the effort with Mass Development. So over the last 10 months, we worked with Mass Development to really focus in on our commercial corridor. Move on to the, I have a few slides to kind of share with you if they move on. Let me see here. Do I have to do something? Yeah. Which one? Got it. Thanks, Melissa. So if you recall, part of, kind of, I would say, the economic development objective and goals that we outlined a couple of years ago when I started was really looking at kind of the, the future of retail. There was a lot of hand-wringing around the mall, and this was before COVID. And how are we going to deal with the changing landscape, especially retail, since the retail corridor had been such a strong component of who we are? That corridor in general generates the lion's share of commercial tax revenue that comes to our town. And so obviously, COVID also introduced how unpredictable things can be, and disrupted our understanding a little bit more of where we live, where we work, and now how the impacts of that will kind of change over time with remote work, and what hybrid looks like, so what foot traffic looks like, and what our daytime population in Burlington now looks like. So with all those considerations, we approached Mass, Mass Development, and they provided us the grant. And we worked with the community doing outreach to develop a vision for this area. Approximately, the study area, again, I'll just remind you, some of this was about 500 acres, and it stretched along Mall Road and some of Middlesex Turnpike. And you can see in this image here, the one, the image in the forefront is the mall, and it kind of stretches back through the district in Leahy. A few takeaways, these are kind of the components and districts that were really built in. You know, you have this cinema, mall, medical district, and Vandegrift on the other side with Blanchard Road, Wayside. A couple of takeaways, and it's not going to be a surprise to this group, majority of the square footage, that 8 million, you know, almost 8,400,000 square feet, is mostly office. You can look at this to kind of start to illustrate how much office we do have. And that's important because that's what we're grappling with, right? What does office look like today, especially in a suburban setting? You know, you see images and a lot of talk in this real estate world about what does the suburban office park look like today, and how do we start to retrofit that for a sustainable future? I know, for example, Conservation has worked with the state on their municipal vulnerabilities plan. Obviously, Liz just kind of updated our housing production, our housing assessment. So the issue around climate, how we're dealing with housing, is also intersecting how we're planning for the future, and that's what really this is about going forward. The takeaways from this report that Mass Development worked with us on is really that we do need to evolve if we want to kind of address the changes, the societal changes going on, and we do that through a regulatory framework. We identified that through this, through that existing corridor, there's only 100 units of residential, which is really the assisted living. So over that 500 acres, there's only 100 units of housing, which is, again, the assisted living. We also identified in that 500 acres, 100 acres that has what we're calling, has potential for development. It's really the infill development that we're talking about. Surface parking lots, really, that's what we're talking about, as development pads, or potential development pads. And what's exciting about that is if you can think of those as spaces for introducing, maybe consolidating parking, but introducing different uses, we can start to see a mix of uses, maybe not all vertical mix of uses, but maybe more horizontal, like we see down Third Avenue, and, you know, kind of some of the Norbloom properties. And if, you know, you take that, the next step, what we're trying to do is incorporate themes of what's in, what people are calling now kind of the 15-minute city concept, and I'm sure you guys have heard this too, where you're just putting different uses that you can access essentially not by taking your car, whether it's getting to your job, which is the most common, home to work, but there are other things, kind of on neighborhood-serving businesses that you do day-to-day, your groceries, maybe daycare. But some of these elements, if you can put them closer within a little bit more of a compact setting, you can create a lower-carbon district, if you will, and start to enhance that kind of quality of life. And so that's kind of what our vision was, that we really identified through this process. So to now take that vision to the next level is the hard part, and that's the real hard work we have to do as a community. And that's really creating the regulatory framework, and then bringing it to town meeting for their approval. And at this point, what you're seeing, what you will see, if you haven't looked at it yet, it's the warrant for town meeting at the end of this month is going to be a request for funding to move this initiative forward. And we were fortunate, we submitted a grant to the Energy and Environmental Affairs Office through the state, and they awarded us $50,000 for this effort. But that is still only a small portion, as Liz has also heard from some of the consultants, this type of effort with the outreach in the, at least scope we're kind of considering at this point, can be upwards of, you know, 175, even 200. So it's, can be big. But, so we're asking right now, we have 50,000, we're asking town meeting for 80, so that brings us to 130. But I think we, given the legwork we've done so far with Mass Development, given some of the resources we have for maybe some of the legal component of it, we think that we can, you know, tackle this project with this funding. And I think town meeting, as you guys know, they can also, you know, inform us. That will be very telling for us if the town wants to take this project on in many ways. You know, it'll be an indication, and they can signal through their vote if this is where they want staff to spend time on, you know, to move forward. So I hope that answers all your questions. This, I just laid out briefly to kind of show you each step that I just spoke to, I probably should have had this up. But it was the award, requesting town meeting funds. If that moves forward, we assume it would be a 12-month process, and the goal is to bring it to town meeting next September, a crafted zoning proposal to town meeting. And that's, that was something.
Great. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions?
I just have a comment.
Please.
Thank you, Melissa. I think the only comment I have, based on the previous proposals you've had that have gone to zoning, I'd really like an opportunity to look at a draft zoning before it goes, and actually be, if you'd be open to, to having that modified versus previously, we got the, the language of zoning, and you weren't necessarily inclined to modify that. So I'd like to see it really early on, and, and if, if it's not something that's to be modified, I don't know if I'd be able to support something that, you know, coming from the planning board, if I, you know, if we don't have an opportunity to even look at it beforehand and have, and you'd be open to modifying it. I think that was really something that I, was not an opportunity last time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just, I would just agree with Member Gaffney that I'd, I'd like us to become involved early, as early on in the process as we can. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you. Presentation.
I, I agree as well, but I also want to thank you because you've really done a good job. I think you've been very, you know, progressive in bringing the town to another level as far as economic development, and very active, and doing a lot of good things, so appreciate that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate the time, and I, I will take that into consideration. I think that's the goal with the 12-month process to, at least, I say, conceptually at this point, we want a steering committee that is our go-to, and we will really kind of vet this out with Planning Board, and this is, you know.
Appreciate it.
I understand that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Moving on to non-approvals. Item A is an application for endorsement of a plan believed not to require approval. Rear Chairman LaRue, CNL Homes LLC is the applicant.
Evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board.
Good evening.
Thomas Murphy for the applicant. And before I start, I just want to give my thanks to Kristin for all her efforts over the years, and wish her the best of luck. I was surprised to hear the announcement tonight, but makes you wonder if somebody actually wants to live, wants to work in the State House voluntarily is a little suspect, but I wish her the best of luck.
Thank you.
With respect to the application, Madam Chair, it's a, it's a plan that does not require approval under the subdivision control law. This is a large parcel of residentially zoned land up at the end of Drake Road, runs behind Chandler Road. My client obtained a variance, 63 feet of frontage on Drake Road, received a variance to build a single-family house on that. There are some wetlands bordering it, and in his discussions with the Conservation Commission, he agreed to deed two portions labeled as parcels A and parcel B on the, on the plan through the Conservation Commission. So before we can deed them, we have to create them, so that's the purpose of the plan that's before you tonight.
Great. Thank you. Steph, do you have any comments?
So quickly, so this, this A and R plan, so these parcels are not buildable. There's a note on the plan, and then there's also a note on the plan that refers to the fact that these will be deeded to the, to the Conservation Commission. I had a conversation with Attorney Murphy earlier today about this, about the timeline, and so I didn't know if you wanted to talk about the timeline of the deed and when that transaction would be happening.
From our end, as soon as the plan is approved, that creates the parcels, we're going to sign the deed. We give it to, I don't know what the town will do it after we give it to them, but it's, it goes to John Keely. I assume she'll run it through town council, and eventually it'll get to record at the registry of deeds, but we will, I will be preparing, if this is signed tonight, I'll be preparing the deeds tomorrow. Gary will sign them probably at the beginning of the week, and I'll give them to John Keely.
Great. Thank you. Steph, we had, we had talked about, you know, not only these aren't, these lots aren't going to be buildable, but a portion of these lots can't be moved to another parcel to build in any way, shape, or form.
These will become town property, not article 97 land. And so, yeah, so it would have to, it would have, in order to take them out, you would have to get a vote from.
Town meeting.
Town meeting, and then you would have to go to the state, so it's, it would be, it would be a very arduous process.
Great.
That's exactly what I want to hear.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions, comments, concerns?
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve and sign an approval-not-required plan entitled subdivision plan of land located in Burlington, Massachusetts, prepared by Eastern Land Survey Associates, dated June 27, 2022, reflecting the subdivision of assessors parcel 1910 into parcel A, 19,423 square feet, and parcel B, 50,224 square feet, and lot G, 122,795 square feet. The planning board finds that this is a proper submission of an approval-not-required plan. Parcel A and parcel B are not buildable lots, as they may be in violation of the Burlington zoning bylaw. Said lots are to be deeded to the Burlington Conservation Commission. The application shall, excuse me, the applicant shall submit two paper copies and an electric, an electronic PDF of the endorsed approval-not-required plan to the planning board office within four weeks of this approval. Proof of recording with the registry of deeds shall be provided to the planning department upon completion.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport?
Yes.
LaRue?
Yes.
Gaffney?
Yes.
Cavino?
Yes.
Impemba?
Yes.
Natola?
Sutherland? Yes.
Just a reminder, before you leave, since we voted on it, please sign the MYLR before the end of the meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members of the board.
Moving on to administrative matters. Item A is a discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change, 152545 Network Drive, Norbloom Company is the applicant.
Good evening. Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, Robert Butler, Raymond Bronstein.
Joseph White from BSC Group, and Emily Derrick is also here, an engineer with BSC Group.
Before we begin, I'm going to add my voice. I mean, 20 years seems like yesterday. But clearly, you've left your fingerprints all over the town, which is a good thing. And I think it was Joe who just made the comment that, you know, people can make a difference, and it can, you know, it takes a long process. I don't think it was 20 years, but, you know, change is evolving, and hopefully, the next generation of change will be as exciting, so.
You were only 25 when she came. I didn't think I was that old. So you'll know when I'm done, because I'm going to flip the table. I'm going to say I'm not. We're here this evening, there's a lot of red on the plan, and let me just explain why. As you all know, the, the Sun Microsystems campus, I think Ernie was here when we did it, by the way, glad to meet you, that, the campus itself is, with the central building, is pedestrian-oriented, that's where the caf, lack of a better restaurant facilities are, et cetera. So when we did the Broad Institute and Varicel, which is the 25 Network Drive, which was approved, we spent a lot of time trying to make sure that we maintain, maintained those pedestrian connections. little grading change caused an adjustment and they, they go beyond our sight. To the naked eye, it's all one project integrated, but they are separate lots. So rather than come in separately, we decided to do, come in at once with all the, the proposed changes to be shown to the board. But the long and short of it is that there are some grading changes, some pedestrian walkway connection changes, some minor parking changes. There's more parking than you need out there, as we made the argument at town meeting, and some utility changes. So while it looks like a lot, it's all designed to integrate everything together so that those who occupy the twenty, twenty-five Network Drive will have safer, convenient access from a pedestrian standpoint to maintain that, that ambiance as you go between the buildings. If you've ever been up there walking between the buildings, it's very nice. So that's basically it. We'll answer any questions that you may have. And oh, by the way, if you haven't been by, the steel's going up on the twenty-five as we speak. So that's a, that's a big step.
Great. I don't have any questions. Is there anyone on the board that has any questions, comments, concerns?
So, so my, so just briefly from staff perspective, you know, it looks like a lot of red. Things are moving feet and inches. It's also looking, if you look deeper into the plan set, it's kind of, it's, it's a streetscape redesign to kind of make, you know, you have this new building, you have the existing building, you have ninety, you have ninety-five, thirty up on the tab. So a lot, ninety-five?
Yeah, ninety-five.
Ninety-five?
Fifty-five.
It's a streetscape redesign. There's great landscape architecture involved, pedestrian accommodations. They're adding a lot of EV charging spots, which is really great because, you know, we're planning for the future here. So that's from, that's kind of staff's perspective on this project, so.
Great. Thank you. Someone have any?
We're good.
They have a motion, please.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for approval of a minor engineering change for property located at twenty-five Network Drive to decrease in building footprint size, reconfigure the rear entrances and loading dock area, add the final location of the emergency generators and associated minor modifications to the site and landscape designs as reflected on the plan sets entitled Twenty-Five Network Drive in Burlington, Massachusetts, Minor Engineering Change Key Sheet, prepared by BCS Group consisting of six sheets, ninety-five Network Drive Burlington, Mass., prepared by RJ O'Connell consisting of five sheets, and ninety-five Network Drive Burlington, Mass., prepared by MDLA consisting of ten sheets, each dated July twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, subject to the following revisions, terms and conditions as printed.
Second.
Chairman LaRue.
Chairman LaRue.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes. LaRue.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Natola. Tonya, you're muted, I believe. Impamba.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Covino.
Yes.
All right. All set.
Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Moving on to matters of appointment.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take items seven A through seven G together for discussion purposes.
Second.
Rappaport.
Rappaport. Thanks.
Rappaport, LaRue.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Covino.
Yes.
Impamba.
Yes.
Natola. Sutherland.
Yes.
Item A is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section six point one point two point one, non-conforming structures and premises of the zoning bylaws. One Burlington Mall Road, Pyramid Burlington Management, LLC, on behalf of RB Hotel Burlington, LLC is the applicant. Item B is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a site plan. One Burlington Mall Road, Pyramid Burlington Management, LLC, on behalf of RB, RB Hotel Burlington, LLC is the applicant. Item C is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special per, pursuant to section four point two point seven point four point two, life science laboratories engaged in the manufacture of life science technologies. And medicines for commercial production to the market, including but not limited to the fields of pharmaceuticals, biomedical technologies and engineering, life sites, life systems, technologies, environmental biomedical devices, biosafety level four, be all four laboratories, as defined with the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, are prohibited in Burlington. The zoning bylaws, One Burlington Mall Road, Lincoln Property Company is the applicant. Item D is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section four point two point seven point nine, hazardous and toxic materials, chemical use, storage, transport, disposal or discharge of the zoning bylaws. One Burlington Mall Road, Lincoln Property Company is the applicant. Item E is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section four point two point seven point twelve, generation of stor, generation or storage of hazardous waste in excess of volumes classified as very small quantity generator, VSQG, of the zoning bylaws. One Burlington Mall Road, Lincoln Property Company is the applicant. Item F is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section four point three point two point fifteen, storage and disposal of oils and fuels, petroleum products of the zoning bylaws. One Burlington Mall Road, Lincoln Property Company is the applicant. Item G is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a site plan. One Burlington Mall Road, Lincoln Property Group is the applicant. Good evening.
Thank you. I'm running out of water here, boys.
Again, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Robert Buckley, Raymond Bronstein. To my right.
Paul Alphen, Alphen and Santos from Westford.
I represent Pyramid, which is the Marriott owner and operator.
And I represent Lincoln Properties.
We have been before the board on numerous occasions on this project. Apropos of what Melissa Tantaklis just spoke about, this is a, an infill development of the lower parking lot at the Marriott facility. We have been continuing this matter for the past few meetings because we were waiting for the Conservation Commission to act on, on the notice of intent, which was before them, so that there would be no changes to the plans when we, when we came here. So they approved it last week. And we're here to hopefully receive an approval to get working on the development of this first-class biotech facility, which will be a, if you, if you know Lincoln, they're doing the properties down on one twenty-eight in Waltham. So they, and they're well-established in both owners, operators, managers, developers nationwide in this field.
Great. Thank you. Steph, do you have any?
Sure. So we've, what is, four or five meetings that you guys have been in front of us since the beginning of June. So at first, this was kind of in the Marriott and this, this property, we all kind of knew that the lower parking lot isn't used very much. But anyway, kind of at first we were like, okay, well, how, how is this going to work together? But I really wanted to say, you know, going through COVID and doing projects and permitting, I don't know, things got a little rocky. And I really want to say that this project is one of the first projects since kind of coming out of this, that this team has been working, has worked really well together. And it's been really good having Spiros from the Marriott understand, to help us understand the operations of the Marriott and what the coming and going and how that industry has changed. But also that they've bounced fully back from COVID, which is awesome. But really understand this interconnection between how is a building at this location going to work with the existing Marriott? And I mean, the existing Marriott is one of the really key pieces of property in town. And wanted to make sure, and obviously they want to make sure that it's successful. So that's been a good, a good dialogue. And they went, and we pushed them and pushed them and said, okay, we'll prove that it can work. Tell us exactly how weekends and weekdays and Saturdays work. So we were really pleased with the information, which, you know, we've been at this for a little while, but they have been, provided a lot of information. We also talked a lot about how can we make the site better? How can we make Burlington Mall Road better? This is one of the older intersections in town. It's the, on the Marriott side, it still has one of the Old Yellow signals, which those are some of the oldest in town. So we had them look at the signal, the intersection, ADA accessibility, walkability in the neighborhood, and really push them to add features to the site as well as look at off-site improvements. And I feel very strongly that we've, the package that they're proposing is the applicant, applicant has offered and the planning board accepts, to do a full design of the intersection within the next twelve months. So not tied to building permit of the building, but right now. So we can have that full design of the intersection. So that allows us to go after additional funding as we have across town in Real Sex Turnpike to make X amount of dollars, ten times that amount of money. But along with that, there also, as, as you remember in the last meeting, that this whole effort between design and capital, they're offering a three hundred thousand dollar contribution to that effort and, and part of building it if, when we get to that point. So I feel good about where we are. Took a little while to get here, but I think we're here. As mentioned, the Conservation Commission approved at their last meeting the project. And we have a decision drafted for you. Just as a note, Jessica was not on the board when we started this. So Jessica is not eligible to vote on the project. But everyone else has been here for all the meetings and are filed Mullins form. So we have six of you that are able to vote on that. Any questions?
Madam Chair, may I make a comment?
Please.
First of all, I want to thank the staff. It was complicated, making all the parcels work together. But there was an unintended consequence of this. The project manager for Lincoln Properties, Jim Noonan here, is a Burlington resident. So he got to see how the town and the staff, dealing with staff, how, how the project works. And I, and unfortunately, most people who watch these projects at home don't understand the amount of work that goes behind the scenes. You know, not necessarily for us, but for the, for the municipal side, how hard they work to make this a reality. Because there's a lot of interesting and novel concepts that we introduced here to get it done.
Great. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions, comments, concerns?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had one, when they were there before us, I had concerns about the traffic, particularly going in across the hotel. And I had asked for a traffic table to be from parking lot of the hotel to the hotel itself. Was that incorporated?
So we have, I'm not going to answer your question directly in terms of a table. But what I will say is, over the last couple of meetings, we've made sure that the, and I don't know if we want to bring up the most recent plan that Brad Johnson just sent us, but that to have multiple additional crossings across the mall, across the mall, across the entrance from the parking lot, that are, there's more lighting, that they're more accessible, and there's no plan to bring up. But.
So directly that's, is no, is what you're saying? The table that I was, a raised traffic table, kind of at the center?
Oh, yes. There is, I'm thinking table, like a table.
Raised traffic table.
No, a traffic table. So there is, there is?
It's demarked. There's a demarcation. We did look at that, Bill.
So let me, let me see if I can ask it one more time. Is there a raised traffic table going from the center of the parking lot to the hotel entrance? I'll ask it to staff, please.
I'm sorry. I actually would like to have the plan in front of me, just because I don't want to speak out of turn. Because I think that's either textured or raised before the crosswalk. And can someone zoom in, like way into just that crosswalk? Because there are demarcation marks that go up and down. And my question to those are, are those marks, is that an elevation change in those marks? Or?
They'll be, they'll be pronounced, they'll be, they'll be raised slightly on the pavement. And the reason we don't have a table, Bill, is that people will be pulling suitcases, et cetera, from the parking lot. And in the wintertime, it really creates an unsafe situation in terms of, you know, being able to cross that, pulling something. And, and the plows would, would, would also destroy it.
So those arrows aren't going up? That's what my question is.
But we, we provided lighting and we provided that it's a clearly marked change in texture, I guess is the way of putting it, so that those areas would be identified and pedestrians coming from not only this location, but if you go to, I guess we can't get out, but the parking lot itself has some connections going the same way.
And there's an additional crosswalk that'll be added.
But we did look at it, but there was a, a very serious concern about safety in terms of particularly in the winter months with the, with the plows and also people trying to navigate with luggage.
So it is activated, though?
It's activated, yeah.
Yeah. So there will be a light, an activated pedestrian light there.
Pedestrian activated light.
Yeah. So you'll hit the button and it'll come on and light.
But we did, we did spend some time looking at it.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Sorry, I misunderstood the initial question. Does anyone else have any questions, comments, concerns?
I just had a, just a question, if there were any new departmental comments that we had in there.
Sure. I can, I can go over that. So every, so Conservation was the only one that we were kind of waiting on. They approved this at the September eighth meeting. Every other department, it's Buildings, Economic Development, Fire, Board of Health, all in favor. DCW Engineering, they have their standard set of technical comments that you don't want me to read.
Nothing out of the ordinary.
No, nothing, nothing crazy, nothing out of the ordinary.
So, so the, the use is actually defined already, right? We already know what it's going to be. What, what level in, in, and Board of Health obviously was okay with what was going on.
Well, first of all, Lincoln is probably one of the country's premier operators. They'll, they'll be operating the facility as project, I mean, building owner. So the Dr. Weiner and the members of the, of the board are quite familiar with their reputation. So very comfortable.
And that's why we made the Board of Health our first stop. And of course, we're aware that under the biosafety regulations, the town of Burlington, that any applicant, any occupant that comes to the premises must obtain a license from the Board of Health regarding the specific products that will be in the facility, and that license must be renewed annually.
I couldn't have said it better.
Steph, once they, they do obtain a tenant, they, they do come back to us, correct?
They will.
Yeah.
Well, as far as I'm, so as part of this, this is giving the special permits. They, at this, correct me if I'm wrong, Kristen, but I believe that they would go to the Board of Health.
Just the Board of Health.
They would go to the Board of Health unless for some reason there's additional special permits.
Yeah, if they're making, yeah, if there's additional special permits or they're making changes to the building, then they would, or the site, they would come to us.
Do you have a tenant at this point in town?
Negative.
Any proposed, any, are fees out there?
We're talking to a variety of people. We, we are confident that once the permits are issued, the transaction with the property owner will proceed in construction, planning for construction and construction compense. We're confident that there will be a tenant by the time that we're ready to occupy the property.
Understood. Does anyone else have any questions, comments, concerns? May I have a motion, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this matter?
I am seeing no one, Madam Chair.
Great. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on these matters.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Covino.
Yes.
Impamba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
There you go.
Sutherland.
Nope, she can't vote. She can't vote.
Okay, I was waiting. Okay, sorry about that. Sorry.
When it's all done, you can vote.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of Pyramid Burlington Management, LLC on behalf of RB Hotel Burlington, LLC, the applicant, for a special permit pursuant to section six point one point two point one, non-conforming structures and premises of the zoning bylaws, to permit upgrades to the entrance to the Marriott and to accommodate associated site improvements associated with the life science laboratory and manufacturing project to be located on the separate property located in the lower parking area of One Burlington Mall Road, for property located in the Innovation, One Burlington Innovation District at One Burlington Mall Road, subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit A attached.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Covino.
Yes.
Impamba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I further like to make a motion to approve the request of Pyramid Burlington Management, LLC on behalf of RB Hotel Burlington, LLC, the applicant, to permit, permit upgrades to the entrance of the Marriott and to accommodate the, is this the same thing? Oh, wait. No, this one's a little different. Okay, sorry. To permit upgrades to the entrance to the Marriott and to accommodate associated site improvements associated with the life science laboratory and manufacturing project to look, project located on the separate property located on the lower Burlington parking area of One Burlington Road, prepared by Bowler Engineering dated April fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, revised to September fourteenth, consisting of twelve sheets. This site plan decision is subject to the following revisions, terms and conditions as amended.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Covino.
Yes.
Impamba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
We're going to sixteen.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve the request of Lincoln Property Company, the applicant, for special permits pursuant to section four point two point seven point four point two, life science laboratories engaged in the manufacture of life science technologies and medicines for commercial
Company, the applicant, for special permits pursuant to section 4.2.7.4.2. Life science laboratories engaged in the manufacture of life science technologies and medicines for commercial production to the market, including but not limited to the fields of pharmaceuticals, biomedical technologies, and engineering. Life systems, technologies, environmental biomedical devices, biosafety level four laboratories as defined by the Center for Disease Control and Prevention are prohibited in Burlington. Section 4.2.7.9, hazardous and toxic materials, chemical use, storage, transport, disposal, or discharge. Section 4.2.7, 4.2.7.12, generation or storage of hazardous waste in excess of the volumes classified as a very small quantity generator. Section 4.2.7.12, generation or storage of hazardous waste in excess of volumes classified as very small quantity generator. And section 4.3.2.15, storage and disposal of oils and fuels or petroleum products of the zoning bylaws, of the zoning bylaws to permit the construction and development of a 96,000 square foot building with associated site improvements and uses to accommodate a life science laboratory and manufacturing project in the Innovation District at 1 Burlington Mall Road, subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit B attached.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Cavino.
Yes.
Empamba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Great.
Thank you very much.
No, I think we're done, we're done on this.
No, do we have more? Is that purpose?
We need to go.
No, you need to do now.
You guys aren't done, we're sorry.
No, you need to do the work.
17.
Okay, just kidding.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve the request of Lincoln Property Company, the applicant, to permit the construction of a development of a 96,000 square foot building with associated site improvements and uses to accommodate a life science laboratory and manufacturing project for property located at 1 Burlington Mall Road, a site plan prepared by Bowler Engineering dated April 5th, 2022, revised to September 14th, consisting of 12 sheets. This site plan decision is subject to the following provisions, terms, and conditions as amended.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Empamba.
Yes.
Cavino.
Yes.
Is there one more, Kristen, or are we good?
That's it.
Thank you again very much. Thank you to your staff for the help. And if I could, it's always easy for me to say that, but I want to thank my staff, Christine Hung, who came and has done a lot of the work on this, and I get to sit up here. So, thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. This was my first experience in Burlington, and it was a pleasure. I wish this type of experience would be replicated in some other nearby communities.
We don't.
It's very nice to hear, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, folks. Have a good evening.
Moving on to minutes, did you ever have a chance to review the minutes from May 4th, May 5th, and July 21st?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of May 4th, May 5th, and July 21st, 2022.
As amended on the 21st?
Pardon me?
As amended on the 21st, please.
As amended on the 21st of?
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Cavino.
Yes.
Empamba.
Yes.
Natola.
Sutherland. I cannot correct. I was not a part of those meetings?
I'm just abstaining.
You're not abstaining. Great. The planning board retreat, we were originally talking about having that at the end of September. If town meeting is extended, then that would be the 28th, and then the 29th, and I'm potentially traveling. So does anyone have any objections to moving that to October 13th?
You do. I'm out of town.
Okay. So that brings us to, everybody take out your calendars.
Wait, wait, sorry, I missed, what was?
Say that again?
Is the 13th not okay?
I am in Chicago.
Chicago's awesome, I'm jealous.
Yeah, I know.
So, the 20th would be our meeting, so the 27th of October? Could we do, anybody calling back?
No.
At this time, I do not. All right, so let's move it to the October, October 27th, and then I will try to organize the venue for that meeting. Next up, Kristen's transition, so.
Barbara.
Sorry, did I oversay this?
Yeah, we just handed them back, right?
There were four, I think you did three.
There were four? Was two on each pack?
No, no, there was just, no, no, there was just one at the top. If you looked at the, the, oh, the lines were weird on the.
Kristen Liz, do you want to speak to this one?
This is where I was going to make an announcement, so that's why I put it there. But I jumped it.
But you jumped it, okay, so cool.
You had anything else to say?
I don't. So, you know, currently right now, just to, you know, in case anyone didn't, you know, kind of catch up, you know, Kristen's going to be working with us and staff, I think, at least potentially until, till the end of the year, you know, to make sure that there is a smooth transition, to ensure that staff is, you know, fully aware of, you know, Kristen's hidden folders that she has on some drive somewhere that, I'm kidding.
She's 20 years of stuff, guys.
Yeah, she's got 20, exactly. A lot of bodies and other things.
I'm sure, I'm sure. So let's not talk about the bodies in a public meeting.
No, no.
But she will be with us, so, you know, we, we're not getting rid of her just yet, which is a good thing.
I think so.
So that being said, you know, if anyone has any questions or things that they need or think that staff should address, then let's, let's get Kristen on it. Tomorrow is your official last day as a Burlington employee. How many boxes did you pack up?
It's been a slogan.
I'm sorry, boxes or body bags, either one.
I've been seeing like things slowly like disappear, like kind of randomly, and like, I have been seeing that. That's a thing that is something like.
My basket of shoes is not.
I mean, that's, that's the first thing that should go, make sure you get those.
Will you be joining us?
Please?
I had sent out a message to board members about interviews, and I've only heard back from two of you, so if anybody wants to participate in the interview process, please let me know right now.
And when, do we have interviews done, or do we have specific dates?
No, we don't. I'm going to, just wanted to know who wants to be involved, so I can reach out to them and do the scheduling thing. I mean, if I, if I'm able to be present, I would like to be. Yes, so.
One of the things you probably should do, I know I've, I've put, put forward a potential contract to consult back for.
We've looked at it and.
For a few hours a week, but if the board would entertain for the chair and vice chair to, to negotiate the final provisions of that, you probably should vote to support that effort and then leave the, unless you want to wait and just vote on the board.
That being said.
If the board is all in favor of trying to do that, you should empower the two of you to finalize the details.
Thank you, thank you for the reminder. So may I have a motion, please?
So you want a motion to.
Support that Barbara and I.
Authorize the chair and the vice chair to negotiate with Kristen on a contract for part-time work?
Which we know in the January 1st.
Kastner Group.
What you said.
Yep.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Cavino.
Yes.
Empamba.
Yes.
Natola.
Sutherland.
Yeah, she's saying yes.
She's saying yes, I know.
Well, yes.
Are, are.
I said brief.
Are you planning on joining us for any of town meeting?
I am, yes.
You are?
I'm planning to be at town meeting.
Does anyone else have anything that they would like to?
Very quickly, I know everybody wants to leave, but very quickly, I just wanted to give a little update. The Burlington Sculpture Park appeared for town meeting in May, and town meeting granted us a very generous $20,000 for specific projects. I wanted to report back that the first part of that, which is the installation, the purchase of the Follow Your Heart sculpture and the moving of that sculpture to Town Common has been completed. And we have just heard back from the town engineering department that was surveying the property at the site itself, so that we could determine if we could safely build a path to a bench and do some site improvements. They just got back to us and gave us the thumbs up. So it's all looking good, and we'll be moving forward with the hope of doing that construction in the spring.
Great. Great.
And I just want to make a, make a public comment about, acknowledge what kind of a troupe a Tony in is, you know, being part of this.
I hope, I hope you're doing well.
Barbara, I do have one question for you. Are interviews going to be at night or during the day?
Very good question, because we, we haven't discussed when we would do them at all. Anyone have any thoughts? If people, if, if people want to participate.
I might be able to participate better at night.
If people really want to participate, and you can only do it at night, then we'll do it at night. If you don't care, then we'll do it during the day, because that's easier for staff. So let me know how you feel.
If there's a forum of the board, these interviews must be publicly posted.
That's true.
Got it. So.
Does anyone feel strongly that they really want to participate, and therefore will have them at night? Speak up. Okay.
No, but if they are participating at night, I, I don't feel like they have to be at all.
Okay, fair enough, thank you. So we will get back to everybody. I'll send out a message when we come up with a date, and anybody who can come, can come, but you'll have to let us know right away, because if we have four, we've got to post it.
You need to tell us 48 hours, huh? At a time. But 48 hours, that is, with time for us to post it.
Right, right, okay. All right, great.
Madam Chair, thank you. Two quickies. We've got just, the department reports, we used to have that to go to the clerk to review and read prior to COVID. Do we want to go back to that practice, or have staff read it, or what's the thought on the board on that?
Shouldn't, maybe if staff makes the determination whether something is unusual and brings it up, Bill, because a lot of times it's just.
Same, yeah.
I mean, usually we do. If there's some, if a department comment is weird, we'll let you guys know. If there's something you guys need to be, well, it'll be in the meeting preview.
Yep.
Or, you know.
Okay, thank you. And the only thing is that Terriaki Madness last night, looking for a spot, that, that plaza is very active again. But Clover actually had two, looked like handmade signs for, for pickup spaces. And again, it was a very active parking lot, and all the back parking lots actually, it was quite filled up as well, so.
Which, which, say that again.
Clover.
Across from the district.
Over by. I park there anyway, whenever.
Yeah, maybe instead of having their own homemade, you know, parking sites just for them, because it's, there's Chipotle there, there's, I know, when I was there, somebody was picking up some stuff, right, for Terriaki Madness. So maybe they can, they can be a general sign, because people were avoiding the signs, but it was, those would be, maybe nice to have, not necessarily right in front of Clover, but maybe you could put them, you know, off to the side a little bit, so you could have anybody.
Quick pickup spots, but not specific to one restaurant.
And not right in front, right to a T-spot.
So I will say, we, on that kind of general note, we have been getting lots of letters from the building inspector, head building inspector, that they've been doing a lot more enforcement on signs. And so it's a really great, it's awesome. He's been sending them to us. It's a great program he's doing, but I'll let him know.
Thank you very much. And just a final thing, Madam Chair, the, from the Recreation Commission, the, the construction of the treehouse at Simon's Park is started.
I saw that.
Who saw that? These guys are incredible.
If you see a treehouse, as a, somebody, an old, an older woman in a treehouse, I mean. I'm sorry. It looks so cool.
There is a rendering probably, if it's not on the Rec Department website, I, I saw it on Facebook, the rendering was.
It looks really cool.
I might even have something.
I'll, I'll be taking my kids.
But these, these guys are amazing. I was there, and they were doing their work. It's all hand, they were doing hand sawing and hand shaving. It was incredible, so.
Very fun.
I think it's going to be pretty, pretty interesting there. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Well, Kristen, it's been fun. I mean, we got you out on a reasonable hour.
Madam Chair, you've been doing a very good job of that.
Hey, you know, he said, he thinks I'm saying brief all the time. I just said please. I mean, I, I do mean that one in the same, but.
So we've got two, two openings then? Is that formally two openings starting tomorrow?
Correct.
Okay, so we're going to do interviews for.
We have to.
Yeah, we have to do one before we do the other.
Are for the director position. Once the director position is filled, we still have one position already that's open, and we can assume that we'll also need to fill a senior planning job spot. And I believe that has already been posted, correct? No?
I don't think so. I'll have to check. I know we talked about it on Tuesday.
Can we make sure that that's, yeah, to make sure that that's definitely posted, either tomorrow or Monday?
Yeah, we, we did post the development planner, development coordinator position. We did get three resumes. They, I think, okay. But then with this, this change, it's more important to make sure that, well, not necessarily more important, it's just there's so much bandwidth that we can do, and just making sure this transition was, was smooth, and then make sure that, and then we'll, we plan on reposting the other position.
Madam Chair, if you keep getting us out of here at 8:30, I'm going to make a motion, you are the chair for life.
I don't know about that. I don't know about that, but we'll, we'll talk.
Kind of like the Queen, right?
Exactly, right.
Can I have a motion for a raise?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Cavino.
Sure.
Empamba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Happy night, folks.